Good.
We are recording, thank you.
Okay. I'd like to welcome everyone to our city council meeting work session tonight. It is February 2nd. I am Scott Bracken, I'm the mayor pro temp. We are excusing the mayor tonight as he is out of town on vacation. Our first item of business is our is to read a notice and determination, and I will do that as to why we are having an electronic meeting. It states pursuant to Utah Code annotated fifty-two dash four dash two oh seven sub four, the city's mayor as chair of the city council hereby determines that the conducting the meeting of the city council on this state and at an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at that anchor location. It is well recognized that the global pandemic currently exists related to the COVID nineteen coronavirus, which has a potential to overwhelm Utah's healthcare system. Therefore, due to the state of emergency caused by the global pandemic, I find that conducting a meeting at the anchor location under the current state of public health emergency constitutes a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present, and that is dated twenty-eight January twenty twenty-one. All right. We're all here. The first item on our business or work session is to review the business meeting agenda. That starts at seven. We'll do the same welcome determination to begin. We'll have our pledge and acknowledgement. I'll ask a council member Peterson if he would lead that pledge.
Certainly.
We'll open it up for citizen comments. Going under the the regular rules with three minutes for individuals if they would like to speak or make comments to the city council. Is there any questions on any of the action items we have on our agenda? This evening, there's the this first item is the is it's an up or down vote on the proposed amendment to the PDD zone wording. Actually, it's not an amendment. It's actually to remind it. We made this this choice last week to remand that back to the planning commission and have them look at what the applicant actually proposed, which they had not done.
Councilmember Bracken, just one further clarification on that. We felt it was important to have that as an official decision in a business meeting. That's why it's before you hear rather than just in a work session. So that's why it's on the business meeting.
Okay, and their first meeting, Mike, would probably be, is it this week or next?
It's it's been noticed and scheduled for tomorrow pending the council action tonight.
Okay. All right, the second is a consideration of resolution twenty twenty-one dash three, which is a consulting agreement with works engineering for a transportation master plan. Tim, do you want to give a brief overview on that? We've talked about it.
Yeah, Matt's actually here. He can provide an update on that, but it's it's the same thing that we talked about in the work session last week. Move forward with this professional services agreement to conduct a study for a master plan, transportation master plan. Helps with, well, Matt, go ahead. I'm taking Matt's thunder here.
All right, no thunder at all. Tim summed it up. We talked about it last week. We took the input from the council that we discussed and added it to our scope of services that we're asking for and moving forward with that master plan.
Okay. The final item on there is authorizing a CLG grant. This is in connection with our historical committee. Do you want to discuss that, Tim, or?
Yeah, we have it as an item also for discussion in the work session in case there's more questions, but this is something that the historic preservation committee or historic committee works on each year. It's to do an inventory and evaluation with consultant services to determine if there's historic structures that can be applied for the national historic preservation site. And like I say, they've done this each year. It's a grant application. We're requesting ten thousand dollars, a match of ten thousand dollars needs to come from the city, which is what has been budgeted for through the historic committee. And so we're recommending approval of this. It's it's a great opportunity to recognize important historic structures in our community as we go through this process.
And I need to give a lot of credit to our staff, Ann Etchell and Paula work on this, but Gail Conger on the historic committee is she is so talented and does so much to progress this work of CLG grants. She prepared the information on it. So I appreciate the work that she's done.
Okay. And as you know, there we will have a little bit of a discussion sometime. Are there any other questions as to the content of these that for our business meeting? Okay, if that's the case, then let's go ahead and move on to our staff reports. The first one is on the gravel pit discussion. Mike, if you want to take on that, introduce our guests. And I believe the subject tonight is the sensitive lands portion of that application.
It is. Thank you. Yeah, I'll give a couple of minutes to give a brief overview of the sensitive lands ordinance and some of the constraints on this site that I think we're all fairly familiar with at this point. And then Tim Thompson is with us tonight, and Tim is with GeoStrata, who is the consulting firm that the city uses for a lot of its sensitive lands and geologic hazard studies. Development and even residential additions that are on properties with steep slopes or fault lines or some of these other hazards that we'll talk about tonight require really specific expertise as we review them and Tim and GeoStrata are some of the best out there. So we bring them in to help us on some of these complicated project reviews. So I will go over just an overview first, and then I'll let Tim explain kind of the process we've undertaken on this gravel pit property so far and then requirements in the future as each phase is developed. So I will start by sharing this presentation with you here. So this, I'll start with a site map that just shows all of the different constraints on the property that we're looking at. For those following along north, north is to the left of the screen and Wasatch Boulevard is on the very bottom here. So that can orient you here. So you can see on the map here, the the red lines, the red dotted lines are fault lines, identified fault lines on the site, and these are some of the more major fault lines on the site as well as the fault setback areas associated with those fault lines. The what's not shown quite as clearly is up in the area of the apartments and the condominiums this into the green area and the red, a lot of it is very steep hillside. A lot of it has been hillside that's been mined out and disturbed and needs to be reclaimed. But this just gets you a picture of the different hazards on the site. The blue here for those following along is is a large water line owned and operated by Metropolitan Water. So that's not a geologic hazard or a sensitive lands constraint, but is certainly a site constraint. So you know, this kind of speaks more largely to why the buildings are sighted where they are, but you can see the the number of hazards on the site. So in the city, when we when we have a property or a project that has sensitive lands hazards that that need evaluation, we have a really long technical ordinance that addresses the process for reviewing each of those and what we need to see to move forward. And that's our sensitive lands evaluation and development standards ordinance, and we abbreviate that as sleds. And that's nineteen point seven six in the city code. So we refer to that often, especially like I said, when we're dealing with these unique properties largely on the east side of the city with with a lot of steep slopes and fault line hazards. So within a sensitive lands overlay zone that we've developed or even outside the the sensitive lands overlay zone, if a property is found to have any of the sensitive lands hazards detailed in this ordinance, this ordinance requires a detailed analysis and a kind of a formal review process to clear all of those hazards before moving forward with site development. I think I should clarify, I believe it's nineteen point seven two. I think I put a typo there, but it's in our zoning ordinance. So whether you're in a sensitive land zone or not, if you have a sensitive lands hazard on your property, when you redevelop the property or do a building addition or do a subdivision, anytime you're making a change, you have to go through and make sure you're identifying hazards, studying them and coming up with ways that those hazards will be mitigated when you are doing your your development. The hazard reports, and this is detailed in the ordinance, are prepared by a third party hired by the developer, but but someone who's licensed and qualified in the area of study. And that can change depending on what the hazard is, but but they have to be a third party qualified professional preparing those reports. And then the role of the city is as those reports are required and completed, the developer and their consultants come in and meet with the city's development review committee or DRC, which is a staff committee made up of members of the planning department, the city engineer, public works director, the fire department, the building department as needed, and then in times of where we have these complex hazards, we occasionally will bring in outside expertise, in this case GeoStrata, to help us with those reviews. Talking about the northern gravel pit project in specific, multiple of these reviews and and studies have been completed for the site. When they first applied and made their application in, I think, twenty, late twenty nineteen, they had submitted studies that that we reviewed that had already been completed for the site. And and we went in and reviewed those and identified deficiencies and how those studies were prepared or or you know, identified things that they did not cover and asked for additional analysis. And we've gone back and forth through that process numerous times. We've also met with various residents and members of the public who who look specifically at some of the sensitive lands hazards and have an interest in that who have identified some concerns that some have been valid concerns that we've asked the applicant to address. Others fall outside of the scope of the ordinance, but but we've addressed those as well and even gone as far as having GeoStrata respond, you know, in writing, reviewing some of those concerns that have been raised by by these resident groups that we've met with, you know, multiple times throughout the process. So it's been a very extensive process up to this point. And where we are right now is at obviously the site entitlement level, so the master development plan level. It's a large twenty acre property. It's divided into eight or nine different phases. So the sensitive lands work that has been done to date is not all of the sensitive lands work that will need to be done. But they've done enough to the point where the DRC in consultation with all the DRC staff and GeoStrata have concluded that the the amount of work they've done to date is acceptable for this phase in the project. The big caveat there is as each phase of development comes forward, the developer will be required to essentially go through the full sensitive lands review process again, specific to each phase, at which point they'll identify in even more detail that, you know, the structural design of buildings, the final site grading, you know, exact elevations of the site grading at those locations. They'll dig new trenches to make sure the exact building locations fall outside of fault lines as they say they do at this point. But the the difference there is when you're looking at a site wide, a twenty acre site that's not been graded or refined yet and with buildings that have not been fully engineered. You know, we we do our best to get the studies done to to clear the site and on paper, make it feasible. You know, we want to make sure there are no hurdles that cannot be cleared in terms of sensitive ends at this point. And then we refine that with each phase of the project. This is very similar to how we treat standard subdivisions or other development projects where you you clear the entire site with a more generalized study. And then as each building permit comes in, you you require the specific mitigation plans like a, you know, a groundwater study or a slope stability analysis specific to a certain building. So this process falls in line with how we do this developments elsewhere in the city. The next slide here just kind of visualizes the review process that I just explained. As it is kind of complex, we've tried to simplify it and actually some of this diagram was was kind of calculated by a resident and, you know, we thought it did a good job of visualizing the process. So we thought we'd share it with you. But it starts with an application. And then with each application, we identify, is this in the sensitive lands hazard area or are there sensitive lands elements on this site? When we do that preliminary review, if there are, in which case of the gravel pit, there clearly are, we hold what's called a pre-scoping meeting with the DRC. And that's a meeting where the DRC staff and the developer staff sit down and we identify all of the hazards on site. And we say, you know, we kind of run through the the sensitive lands ordinance and identify all of the the studies that need to be done and how they need to be completed, what we need them to show and and kind of develop a plan for how those things need to be addressed. The work then is divided into five different categories, and these are the different kind of hazards we see in the city. And groundwater is another one that that falls, it goes through a similar process, but falls in a different section of the ordinance, but these are the primary ones, and these certainly are the ones applicable at the gravel pit site. So we have surface fault rupture hazards, that's fault lines. We have slope stability, which is obvious, but that that includes hillside reclamation on the back of the site. Anywhere they have steep slopes and they're developing near them, you know, we need to look at slope stability. We have liquefaction potential, debris flow and rockfall hazards. So these are all hazards that have been identified, and in pre-scoping meetings, we we went through these hazards with the developer to identify how they need to be studied and what we need them to say to to be comfortable moving forward. And then we get into this, these next three phases, which is just kind of a repetitive cycle of the developer submitting a scope of work. So coming in and saying, okay, for fault lines, here's what we're going to do. We're going to dig trenches here, here and here, and and this is when we're going to do it, and we need to make sure it's okay with the city. So they develop a scope of work, the DRC signs off on that. They go out and do the work and and complete the study and submit their findings to city staff. And then the DRC goes and reviews that work. And if it's good, if it addresses everything and complies with the ordinance and and DRC staff is comfortable with it, that section would move on to final review. If it's not good, you go back to work scope, refine the scope and update the study and complete that again. The same process applies for each hazard on the site. At the end, and that that can take one go around, but for big, complex projects, usually that takes a few rounds of studies and updates and refinements and more information, and that certainly was the case with this gravel pit. So this takes a lot of time, and this has taken a lot of time for the gravel pit property, and it's very technical and engineering heavy. And that's what Tim is going to help kind of explain here tonight. Once all of these hazards are cleared and the DRC is satisfied with everything, we get down to the final review, which we look at the complete package, we make sure all of the studies are are as we reviewed and as approved. All of the findings and recommendations are incorporated into the plans and and the DRC signs off on that and then and then we can move the project forward to project approval. So at the the master development plan level, which is where we are for the for the northern gravel pit, we are here right now. We've done the final review and again, the DRC is comfortable based on the reviews that have been done and the study's been done so far. You know, at this level of the project, we're comfortable with where it is and and ready to move that portion of the project forward. However, this will also occur at each phase of the project. So so when phase one comes on and and phase one is proposed to be the multifamily apartment building, we will have another pre-scoping meeting with the developer and say, okay, now you have actual engineered building plans. You've got finalized grading plans and civil engineering drawings. You've got all your site details, you know, planned out and designed on paper. You're going to go in again, and we're going to have you trench the footprint of the building and and again, verify that it's clear of fault lines. You've got slope stability, so you need to, you know, show us how you're reclaiming the slope and how you're going to design your building to mitigate any hazards caused by that. You're going to address liquefaction, debris flow, rockfall. And and we'll go through the same cycle for all of the applicable hazards for phase one and get that down to final review, and that will be required before any site plan approval or building permit can be issued for phase one. And that will happen at every phase. So every phase of the project that comes in will go through this more specific, the site specific sensitive lands review process, following the same procedure we followed at the high level, we just do it at a very site specific level, and some of the details get more technical and the engineering is more detailed and fleshed out. And and that's the process. So it's it's two reviews, a site wide one at the beginning and then another review at each phase of each project before a building permit is issued.
To ensure, Mike, can I ask a question? That final review at each stage, is that a administrative approval? Or is that a planning commission thing again?
It's all DRC, so development review.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Now, to make sure this happens, because with multiple phases, you know, this this could develop out over numerous years. We've we've built the following language in italics here into the written ordinance that will govern the the northern gravel pit site. So not only we have the development plan and and that's going to show where buildings need to be and how many units could be in them and those details. The project needs to comply with the development plan, but we've also built in this written language that will be reviewed at each phase of the project. So no matter who's reviewing it, this language is in the code. And I'll just read it. I know it can be read here, but I'll just read it out loud for anyone listening. It just says, development in the PDD two zone, which is this gravel pit area is subject to all applicable sensitive lands development standards detailed in title nineteen point seven two, and each phase of the development shall be required to properly complete requisite site studies and reports and comply with findings of required sensitive land studies. We list them out, all the different hazards that I detailed. Such requirements shall be completed before building permits are issued for each phase of development and are subject to review and approval by the city's development review committee. To to staff that satisfies that that makes sure that the you know, there's no loopholes or shortcuts here, the applicant at every phase of the project is going to come in and go through that scoping process and sensitive lands evaluation and review process. A few other details there, hillside reclamation, which I know has been of interest. That's a phase one requirement, because a lot of that hillside is behind the apartment building. So so that will be part of the slope stability analysis for phase one of this project. Final site plans for each phase also must comply with the approved development plan. So if let's say a a small offshoot of a fault line is found that that wasn't picked up previously, if that changes the location of a building, that that will then would then violate the development plan. And what that means is any site modification required due to sensitive lands constraints would result in an amendment to the full PDD two zone, which is the process we're in right now. So we would take it back through this legislative process. You know, we know the developer certainly doesn't want to do that, so we feel that that is enough to, you know, for them to understand the the review and the work done to date should be should give you enough comfort and give the city enough comfort that that this third, fourth bullet point never has to happen. We need to make sure these hazards are studied and addressed enough that, you know, down the road, we don't need to to go in and amend the full PDD again, because that's a as we're in it now, you know, an eight month plus process to do that and should be an incentive to, you know, to make sure the studies done today are accurate and and completed, which we've verified they are. But this is just to show you the kind of the the mechanisms built in to ensure compliance. They have to do specific studies at each phase. Their site plan also has to comply with the development plan. And if if anything doesn't, then they need to amend the full PDD ordinance. So so that's kind of the the overview of the sensitive lands process and how we've applied it to the site. Again, we're based on the city engineers review, based on GeoStrata's review and numerous conversations and meetings and amended studies by the developer. At this entitlement phase, we felt comfortable with the work they've done, understanding that more detailed engineering and studies and designs will come forth with each phase of the project. And and that the understanding on the city's part is, you know, regardless of the, you know, what it takes to engineer those designs or or what the cost would be, they need to comply with this development plan and and their hazard mitigation has to be such that they can build the buildings where they say they're going to. So so that's a high level overview, and with that, I can take any quick questions, but I'd like to turn it over to Tim to give you some more detailed feedback on the review process for this project.
Yeah, I would I would like to listen to Tim. I have I do have one question. I think it's fairly quick. If, for example, you answered one, which is what if they find a new fault or something like that, then they need to kind of start over. I'd assume that may also be considering we've had an earthquake in the valley in the last year. If that happened and changed things, that would probably also initiate a complete start over in many cases, if for whatever created like a landslide or something like that, this process would need to be repeated.
Yeah, I mean, that's a little speculative, but say, yeah, there was
It is.
a landslide event on phase four of the site. So when phase four came in, they would have to study based on the updated conditions on that site and make sure, you know, they're they're clearing the site based on those updated conditions.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, think. Tim, you were going to Mr. Thompson, I guess.
Can I? I've got a quick question for staff before we go to Tim. Mike Johnson, what if our sleds ordinance is insufficient? I I've heard that we need to do a site specific ground motion study that will ensure proper seismic design of the buildings. What if we don't address that already in our sleds?
Well, we so we do feel our slides ordinance is sufficient. We are updating it to come into compliance with any, you know, kind of state level updated academic studies, and Tim can talk about that because he's helping us update that as well. But the process and the detail we feel is sufficient for the, you know, the the site level impacts that we see and need to mitigate. So and this is the same ordinance we've been using, you know, on on the properties in the city for for the past several years since we've implemented this code. It's very thorough. It's very detailed. So so staff and I think city engineering staff and and Tim would agree that our current ordinance is sufficient. We can update based on new data and new information out there, but the the hazards we're mitigating are are the appropriate hazards to mitigate and you know, I suppose if anything new was added, we we would have to deal with it at that time, but I I just, I think the takeaway is we feel the ordinance today is sufficient, and and Tim might be able to add a little more context to that.
Okay.
Yeah, when it comes specifically to the site specific spectral accelerations from a seismic event, the international building code, the two thousand and eighteen version of that is what the state has officially adopted. There isn't a more up to date one right now. And they brought with the two thousand and eighteen codes some updated procedures for figuring out seismic parameters that structural engineers use when they design buildings, and those are updated and implemented as part of the geotechnical report already. Because there was a potential for liquefaction here, they've already done site specific boring. We made them do additional site specific borings. Those site specific borings and the data from those are utilized to generate site specific spectral acceleration curves. However, the international building code, the two thousand and eighteen version has a whole process that you follow. It allows the structural engineer to make certain assumptions that are extremely conservative and not use that, but those typically tend to cause pretty drastic structural modifications to the building. So the structural engineer will request the the appropriate data be provided based on the two thousand and eighteen code, and that requires it's a very prescriptive thing that that the building code has them do. So they'll be following that just as part of the normal building code. That's why it's not specifically in our sleds ordinance. Because it's part of the building code. The reason why we had some discussions with the staff about, as you take a look at this map, there are trenches that were dug in order to locate these faults that that trend through the property. However, the trenches were dug in two thousand and nine. And at that time, mining was actively in in progress, so they had to dig their trenches on the And at that time, mining was actively in, in progress. So they had to dig their trenches on the weekends to avoid kind of getting in the way of the mining operation of the gravels and sands and other aggregates there. There were some buildings and structures in the middle portions of the property that precluded trenching in some of those locations. And so they did the best they could to cover the site with trenches. Some of the spacings between the trenches are wider than we would recommend. But until the site is completely raised and all the equipment and all the materials are gone and an official grading is done so that the final grades are established, because faults are not completely vertical, they are at some angle. As you grade and lower the ground surface, you move that fault at whatever angle it's dipping. So they did trenching in 2009. Subsequently, there's been a lot of modifications to the ground surface. But then between trenches, they used the 1938 aerial photos, because those predated any development on the site, to kind of track those faults across the ground surface and do their best to project what they found in the trenches across the site. Well, obviously, since 1938, the ground surface at this site has been modified significantly. So you're taking 2009 trenches, connecting those dots with 1938 air photos and trying to project that onto a 2021 surface, which at some point is going to be even different than it is right now. So the problem that we had was not that we necessarily expect large numbers of additional faults to be found, although there always is that possibility, because there were areas of the site that could not be trenched, because there's structures there right now. And as they clear all that away, we're, so what we told them was the best thing to do is use this as a feasibility study. I think they've done the best they can with the data they currently have. But until they completely clean the site up, get down to the grade where they want to establish footings, they can't really, with any specificity, building by building, proposed structure by structure, clear that without having some unknowns. And so that's why we put in the, the review process that we did, that yeah, this was good to show that they had cleared some area that they designed around what they knew to be there. The exact location of those is going to vary with what they do with the, with the final ground elevations. So at the time that they go to each structure, we recommended that they trench additional trenches at the footprint locations of each structure, so that they can verify that their findings remain consistent with the current conditions at the time of construction. If they find that because they graded the ground in such a manner that the faults that they have identified migrated closer to the structure, they might have to modify those structural footprints to make sure that they still have the setbacks that they currently have anticipated to have the faults be the appropriate distance away from any footings of any structures that are habitable. And there are other buildings, like the condo building, that's kind of in the middle on the left of that picture. It's kind of a dark L-shaped with a lighter structure. You can see that that building is outside, the dark part of the building is outside of the setback. But the lighter part of the building, which is parking, is within this fault setback. So they're going to make that in the design process, a detached parking garage, which detached garages with nobody working as a parking attendant are allowed to be built over faults if, if they're approved. But they're, they're not precluded because they're not habitable structures. But they haven't fully designed these yet. So we don't know exactly how that's going to work and how far apart the habitable structure would be from the inhabitable portion. So there's a lot of unknowns that we still have to look at. We've made the applicant aware of this. And they understand that as they move forward, they're going to have to look at these areas and they might have to adjust and tweak their designs. But our concern was you may be accepting this development based as a whole on what they're planning on using. And if they lose one of their buildings, it could completely kind of change the concept of the development. That's why it will have to completely go back through the review process, so that the city council can basically decide whether the new layout, if it has to be redesigned, is still something that the city is okay with. So that's why we've done that, is because there are just some unknowns that we can't resolve until they get partway into the grading and construction process. The same is true for slope stability. So that large building, it's kind of a yellowy color on the, the upper part in the middle. That's that largest building. In order to do the slope stability along that cross-section CC prime, they have a, like about a 30-foot-high cut into the slope. And they have then five feet below the footings, where they have a retaining wall on that cut that goes all the way through the 30-foot-high cut and down into and below the footing grade, an additional five feet. And that retaining was in order to get them an appropriate factor of safety for slope stability. But that wall hasn't been designed, because the building hasn't been designed. And based on the type of slope, there's only a few different types of retaining wall types that could be constructed there. It, it, it's sand and gravel, so you couldn't cut a 30-foot-high vertical cut and then try to construct and cast in place a wall in front of that. I don't believe it would be stable in a vertical cut 35 feet tall. So it's going to have to be some type of wall system that they probably construct from the top down as they, as they engineer and then cut that, that surface. Something like a cast-in-place anchored wall or something like that, some kind of wall system gets constructed as the cut is excavated. Well, that has not been designed. So they've got geotechnical design parameters, vertical and horizontal loads and soil strength types, but the geotech that did the slope stability did not want to design a wall for a building that didn't, the design for the building didn't exist, the cut didn't exist. It's all theoretical at this point. So again, they, they showed that with a retaining structure, given some of the parameters that they assumed, that cut can work and be safe and meet the minimum factors of safety. But until there's actually a wall contractor come into the project who's going to design that wall, we'll have to see at that time what their proposed wall type is and then how they've addressed the slope stability. They'll probably redo the slope stability for that wall design to show that they're meeting factors of safety. So theoretically, as a feasibility, they've shown that it's feasible to build a wall. But somebody has to come up and say, this is the type of wall we're going to build. This is exactly how it's going to be constructed and this will work and meet the factors of safety in the end, but also be constructible. Given the nature of the soils and the steepness of the slope and the steepness of the cut that they're designing. So that's why there are, we feel that they've addressed all of the hazards up till now on their concept plan. But each one of these issues, now liquefaction has kind of been settled for the site. They drilled some borings. They went through the normal procedures for liquefaction assessment and found the liquefaction potential to be low. It's mapped in an area that's low to very low on the state's map anyways. However, there was some shallow groundwater encounter during the geotechnical work. So shallow groundwater and sandy soils are always what lead to a potential for liquefaction. But seismic events cause soils to densify. And if soils are dense enough, then even though they have shallow groundwater, in a seismic event, they won't liquefy. Their findings from their borings, and they did a number of them and then did a liquefaction assessment, was that the soils are not prone to additional densification. So there isn't a liquefaction hazard at the site. Rockfall's also been cleared for the whole site. There really is no outcroppings that will cause rockfall. Now, there could be, uh, on some of these construction cuts, cobbley or bouldery layers that they encounter that could cause localized construction-related rockfall hazards. That's part of the reason why this would have to be revisited at the time of construction, just to see if, if they do a, a cutting on hillside and a cobbley layer is exposed, they'll have to deal with that potential hazard and find a way to mitigate that in the design of their slope retention at the time of construction. But at the current situation, there's no rockfall hazard. So the only two hazards really dealing with are surface fault rupture and slope stability. There was a relic landslide that was looked at. That was a intra-Bonneville landslide. So that meant when Lake Bonneville was here, I don't know, 18, 20, 25, 30,000 years ago, during a seismic event, some of the clay in the lake moved and they had a, probably a landslide into the lake. Subsequent to that, the lake covered it up with a bunch of sand and gravel deposits, so it's buried. And there's no indication that that landslide, which is kind of a relic fairly localized body, has any effect on the slope stability. We made them consider it and they modeled it, but it just, it's buried too deep below the sand and gravel and below the proposed footing grades. It's just buried. So it's, it's not anything that's at the surface that could cause a problem. However, that was identified and it was modeled. So I don't know if anybody has any questions specifically, but in general, that's where we are. Two main two hazards, slope stability, surface fault rupture. They've done enough to show that their design could be feasible, but they're going to have to do additional work with each individual structure they build to make sure that their original assumptions hold true or else they'll have to modify things.
And I've got a quick, oh, go ahead.
Let me make one statement, then we'll, we'll go ahead and, and take a couple of questions, if that's okay. So if I'm understanding what you and Mike said about the sleds ordinance and, and whether its applicability, the sleds ordinance says, these are the, these are the different things that you need to study. But how you actually do that, how you actually engineer and how you actually do that, those are all based on building codes and current best practices in each of those various industries, because those are all adopted within our, they're not written into our code. They're adopted by our code. Is that a fair way to say that?
Yeah, we don't.
There was a 2020 earthquake International Building Code that came out, then we would be moving to that and those recommendations rather than one that was a few years old.
Yes, as far as the building code's concerned, the state adopts that. And then that becomes the guidance that everybody in the whole state has to follow at that time.
Alright.
When you say, as a factor of safety, is that out of our ordinance? Or what do you mean when you say factor of safety?
So, yeah, that, there's, in slope stability modeling, there's a screening procedure that you do where there's a set procedure that is followed. It's an industry standard. It's, it's not, it, it is actually portions of that are in the code, how you collect the data, how you put the models together. But there's a lot of engineering that goes into that, that's best practices. So there are programs that are used that are well-respected, well-known, two or three programs. All the engineers will use one of those two or three programs. And you model, so a factor of safety, if it's static, just sitting there, no earthquake, just sitting there. A factor of safety of one means it's just barely stable. If it drops below one, that means it's unstable. It may not have failed, but it's, it's modeled to be unstable in its current condition. So they would like to see not a factor of safety of one, but 1.5, which means it's 50% beyond that threshold between what should be stable or what may be unstable. The same thing is true with seismic, only the, only the standard of care is that with a seismic event, which is a short-duration event, the factor of safety has to be met of one. So in a seismic event, you want your safety to be a number of one or higher that comes out of that program modeling. If, is sometimes the case, the factor of safety statically is over 1.5, but the seismic factor of safety is under one, then there's a procedure to go through, which is a deformation analysis, which determines, alright, it, our modeling, our screening modeling shows that there may be some instability in a seismic event. So we're going to go and model exactly what type of movement we're looking at. And then the code has a number of inches that you are allowed to have in your deformation analysis. If it's just moving an inch, it's okay. If it's moving 12 inches, it's not okay. The code actually does say in a deformation analysis, how much movement during a seismic event is acceptable, or at what point does mitigation have to be done to reduce that deformation? So they might stabilize the slope to create a buttress in a, or a wall with a anchoring system, so that they can then show that, well, our engineering has reduced the movement during a seismic event below what is acceptable. So we're okay. If the static factor of safety is below 1.5, then that hillside is not okay. We've had some, you know, some discussions with consultants that, well, even though it's barely below 1.5, we did a deformation analysis and you know, we, we figure that we've got it figured out. But the problem is, the code requires a static factor, which means no earthquake, just sitting there, of at least 1.5 or higher. So 50% safety over what is kind of borderline safe. And then if the seismic is low, that's when you do the deformation analysis. So in this situation, they had a, a static factor of safety that met the threshold, but the seismic did not. So they had to do some designing of retaining walls and other engineering mitigations. And I think actually, the original, like if they were to do that 35-foot-high cut, they wouldn't even have a static factor of safety that, that met a, a 1.5. It would be exceptionally low, probably very close to one or lower. So they have to have the engineering to bring the static and the pseudo-static, which is the seismic factors of safety up to what the code, and our code is the same as all the other cities in the state. The 1.5 in the one is not some constructive, that's been an engineering practice before we even put them in ordinances.
And have you seen a site as complex as this one? Like, it seems like we've got a lot going on and, um, I kind of feel like we're putting the cart before the horse by creating a, a building footprint and then looking for the, the details of the faults, instead of identifying all of the faults specifically and then deciding on building.
Have I seen a site that's complicated before? There are some, yes. This is, there's no, there's no doubt, this is a complicated site because of the number of faults that are running through here. But for instance, the old Cottonwood Mall site, where they were taking down the old Cottonwood Mall and going to be replacing it, that was an exceptionally difficult site. And I don't even think that it's been resolved or developed because it's so complex. And I worked on the Salt Palace at the beginning of my career, when they rebuilt the, the Salt Palace for the Olympics. That was an extremely comp, extremely complicated site and a very politically charged site. It's a heck of a place to start your career. I almost went into something else at that point. So, yeah, there have been some difficult sites, both from a geologic point of view, an engineering point of view, and a political point of view from public feedback or the needs of the community. You do see them, but there's no sugarcoating it. This is a, this is a, a site that's going to take some work to do right. And there are going to be real limitations on what can be done there because of the, the geologic hazards that they've already identified. And there, uh, there are some needs to continue to identify and clarify those before you allow building there.
Okay, I believe Councilman, Councilmember Peterson had a question and then we'll give Councilmember Michael a chance to ask questions as well. And if we have a little bit more time, we'll go back, but we're getting close to our, our time. Go ahead, Doug.
Thank you, Scott. Tim, I just have a question. As far as knowing that it's on a, a fault line, which, you know, there's a lot of structures on and around fault lines, is the standard footing and foundation the norm on this? Or do they have to do something? They don't have to do something as intense as the city and county and the Capitol Building, right? It's not, uh, it's not engineered for that possibility in this instance, as far as because of they know where, you know, where this lies?
So they're not trying, like what you might be talking about retrofitting buildings that may be in areas that currently we wouldn't build them if we, if they weren't there, or they were built with standards so old that they need to be completely retrofit. Obviously, these will be built with the current structural standards based on the current building codes. So from that point of view, no, it's probably not as bad as some of those other sites. However, might they need to modify? might they need to modify some of these structures? It's possible that if they get there and they don't find any major faults, but they find very small micro faults that run through the area. The UGS has in their ordinance, some prescriptive ways to deal with those structurally, just like you would with minor liquefaction or debris flow, they'll build structures, slope stability, they build structures in order to make the the safety increased enough that it's a reasonable level of risk. With faults, you have to realize that when we do these big studies, the UGS has found, generally speaking, 70% of the time faulting occurs on faults that already exist. It's recurrent movement on existing faults. 30% of the time new faults rupture in the general area of those faults. So that's why the setback zones and those setbacks, the width of those setbacks are based on the type of use of the building. So you could see by the condominium building, it's a minimum setback that's smaller than that much larger building because the occupancy requires a larger setback. Public buildings, churches, schools require a larger setback. Some critical infrastructure like nuclear power plants and and large, very critical structures will require not just Holocene faults, but maybe the entire quaternary age to be looked at because you just the level of risk is so high. The criticality goes up, the scrutiny goes up. But with the development that they have here, they're following all of the current standards. I mean, these are the same kind of standards that have in California. That's where we got ours from. So these aren't unusual and and they are following them. The problem is there's only so much they can do, but it's be very difficult and time consuming to completely raise the entire site completely graded down and then dig trenches to see if they can design it almost as an iterative process. They have to do some feasibility to get the ball rolling. Then as the city, you decide whether conceptually you like that plan. And if it moves forward, then as that continues and they're able to, then more scrutiny has to be put on those areas so that they answer all lingering questions. And those are all in the review process. We've got all those documented. They know what those are moving forward. But it's really hard to tell somebody you have to put a huge amount of money and, you know, like an old house. If if somebody tears it down and then does a fault study and finds out there's a fault there, they can't rebuild it. But if you buy a house, you thinking about tearing it down, you realize there's a fault underneath it, the code allows you to stay in it until the life of that building is done. There are some grandfathering and we don't expect people to tear their houses down and move. But we do through attrition over time get people out of unsafe areas into safer areas. When you do something like this, before they tear the whole thing down and and just clean it all up, they have to do a certain level, which I think they've really done a good amount of work. But there's enough unknowns. We don't feel comfortable saying you're good, move forward. We're letting them know you could do a lot more work and clear all these unknowns up now. But they would really, I think, prefer moving through the process and answering these questions one at a time and taking the risk that if something changes, they're going to have to go through the whole process again. That's a personal decision on their part, how they want to handle it, I guess.
Appreciate those comments. Councilmember Michael, do you have a question?
Sure. I think my question's for Mike, though, just a process question. So assuming the project goes forward and they did the call it micro-siding from GeoTech to the large apartment building and I don't know, they they learn there's a mini fault or whatever hairline fault, what I apologize, Tim, for butchering your verbiage, but and they they could only build, say, three quarters of that building and they the approved height was 10 10 stories, but they're saying, oh, well, to get the density that I needed, I'm going to need to go up three more stories. Would I would assume they have to come back to the council, the planning zoning and the council to get the additional height approved, what would?
Yeah, that's the that's the way it's been built is if they encounter any any hazards that are unanticipated that really modify these buildings or make them not possible and change their site, they have to come back through the whole legislative PDD process through planning commission, public hearing and city council.
Okay. And then my last question is, Tim mentioned something about how until they get the approval, they don't want to, I don't, I'm putting words in his mouth, so excuse me if I am. It sounded like the developer doesn't want to clear the site and do the additional site work until they get the approval. Is it, did I hear that right? Because I've always wondered and people always ask, you know, why do we still have this site that's dormant with this, you know, you know, metal sticking up and and nobody's cleaning it? Is it true that it will remain as it is today until somebody gets approval to, you know, continue the studies and build what is ever it is that they want?
They could. That may be what they're choosing to do. They could go clear that site out, you know, as a property owner at any time and, you know, move the the equipment off. I think what what Tim was saying and and kind of where we're at with the sensitive lands process is, you know, to require final site grading at this point without any any approval at hand. The applicant would need to go prepare civil plans for the entire site and essentially design out, you know, the the final profile of the site and start designing buildings before any approvals in place to to really accurately figure out if there are more hazards. But what you're saying is they could go today and remove the tanks there if they chose to. There this this process isn't holding them up from starting, you know, removal of structures or demolition on the site. I think that's just the approach they're choosing here.
Okay. And the last question, I know that the the Canyon Center, it sounds like maybe changing from their approved hotel to some other use. I guess my concern with approving this master development is that it's things change until things are known. Is there a reason why we can't just work piecemeal and and sort of approve what they're, you know, just one by one? Is there a reason why we're giving them the the whole approval when things might they might come back anyway and change it most likely?
Yeah, I think the difference there is Canyon Center standard, it's just a development in the mixed use zone. So they're allowed to do at that site, anything that's allowed in the code on this property. The the re the uses there, so retail, hotel, condominium apartments and the location. If this is approved, this this is set in stone. They can't go and start changing that. So they they couldn't change the apartment into an office building without amending the full PDD process and development plan. So it's a little different in this case where you have a specific ordinance and a a codified site master plan that prescribes the number of units and the type of use and the height of buildings. That's kind of the benefit of the PDD is you know a lot more upfront. Whereas with Canyon Center, yeah, they could go in and you know, if they wanted to change a restaurant into a different use that's allowed in the mixed use zone, they could do that at any point through a planning commission process and not going through any council process. If they want to change a use on this site beyond what's shown here and what's in their ordinance, they need to come through a planning commission and city council to do that.
Okay, or there could be some site factor that would require them to change it and have to come back anyway.
Correct. Yeah, if if anything caused them to need to change a use or a a location of a building or density or height or anything, they would have to come back through that full legislative process.
Thank you.
All right. I appreciate that. I guess if there are any more additional questions from the council, I guess direct them to either Tim Tingey or Mike to discuss them. We've gone a bit over time on this discussion, but I think it was valuable and useful. I appreciate you coming, Mr. Thompson, and explaining that. Didn't catch all of everything that you said. Some of it got a little bit technical, but I did get most of it. And I I I appreciate you taking the time very much.
I'm glad to do it. And if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to get on a meeting with them and where I could share my screen and show whatever. I mean, it was just too difficult to do it here in this meeting, but I'm happy to answer any of your questions and try to explain our thinking and where we are with any issues that you might have. So happy to do that.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is our sustainability master plan discussion. We've got Samantha de Silhorst here with us. Tim, did you want to do an introduction here, brief, and then turn the time there? Or just?
Be happy to. I appreciate all the work that Samantha's been doing on sustainability master plan and other aspects. She's done a lot, especially working with Holiday and Mill Creek with our tri-city efforts for sustainability. So we think it's a great time to provide this update. She's been going to the Holiday and also the Mill Creek City Council meetings and providing updates. And so this is her opportunity to do that here and to answer any questions. There's been a lot of work done and turn it over to Samantha if you're okay with that, Councilmember Bracken.
Go ahead.
Perfect. Thank you, council, for making some time on your agenda this evening. I'm going to share my screen and go through some updates here. And someone give me a thumbs up if you're seeing my screen. Okay, awesome. Thank you. I'm thinking maybe like a year and a half into the pandemic, I'll finally get used to Zoom, but it's still a little weird. So the first update I want to give this evening is on the Community Renewable Energy Program, which is also often often referred to as House Bill 411. So you may hear those terms used kind of interchangeably. A bit of background on this, this program originated from legislation from the 2019 Utah Legislative Session, and that's where it got the the name House Bill 411. The purpose of the program is really to create a way for communities to provide an option of net 100% renewable energy or more specifically electricity to their community members through a partnership with Rocky Mountain Power. I want to clarify that net 100% renewable electricity is kind of a tricky term. It means that participating communities will still be connected to the standard electricity grid, but that their annual electricity consumption would be offset through the production of new renewable resources. And I wanted to mention too, feel free to stop me if you have immediate questions. I've reserved time kind of in between each topic to go through questions, but by all means, just speak up if you have thoughts. So as most of you probably remember, the city passed a resolution in 2019 aspiring toward 100% renewable electricity for city operations by 2022 and citywide by 2030. This Community Renewable Energy Program, House Bill 411, is really an avenue for us to meet that goal and meet that resolution. Other communities such as Park City, Salt Lake City, Summit County, and I'll I'll show a full list and a few slides are also utilizing this program to meet their own renewable goals. So it's it's kind of a a unique option there that that does fit with the resolution that we passed. As a bit of a refresher, the first and most recent step for program participation was to pass a qualifying resolution, which you just saw on the previous slide. These resolutions needed to state a goal of achieving net 100% renewable energy by 2030. And they needed to be passed by the end of 2019. So 23 Utah communities completed this step, making them eligible. Here is a list of those 23 communities. Obviously, Cottonwood Heights qualifies for further participation as does Holiday and Mill Creek. You'll notice the list is comprised of a wide array, wide array of Utah communities. We've got counties, townships and cities kind of all over the state of Utah. So it's a pretty unique program in that sense. This gives just kind of a visual look at a really simplified timeline. So we see that resolutions were passed, we've checked that step off. And we see kind of a blue star representing the next step, which is to sign what's called the governance agreement and budget program costs. And I'm going to dive deeper into that in the next slides, but just wanted to show this really basic timeline to give you kind of a sense of what we might be looking at. It's going to be a multi-year program. We've kind of outlined 2023 as a start date for it, but obviously that's that's just an estimate. So talking a little bit more about that next step. And next step for interested communities is to sign what's called the governance agreement. This agreement outlines different processes for things like voting, cost sharing and other administrative parts of the program. It's important to note that it has to be a single agreement that all communities sign, so it can't be 23 individual agreements. It has to be a single agreement in order to create a really unified program structure. So as a little bit of background on the work being done on that, staff representatives from each community have been collaborating on a draft of this agreement. I've had the pleasure of attending those meetings over about the last year. So we've seen that take take some shape. We've also had review from legal representation from the various communities who have looked through the various drafts prepared by staff and offered legal perspective. We have kind of a really consensus based draft of this agreement that in its finalized version needs to be signed by July 31st of this year in order to continue to be eligible in this program. One of the big parts of the governance agreement is talking about program costs. And I know that that's been a really big question for a lot of communities is trying to determine what the costs will be for this program. So I'm going to take a few slides and kind of break those down. There are several costs associated with the program that are actually outlined in the legislation. The governance agreement draft proposes that we separate these and kind of approach them differently. So we've separated them into what I'll refer to as non-noticing costs and then what I'll refer to as noticing costs. So just a brief overview, no, non-noticing costs are for a community expert, the Rocky Mountain Power application fee and the Office of Consumer Services Division of Public Utilities expert. The governance agreement proposes that we split these fees among participating communities using a formula based 50% on electricity load and 50% on population. So that's kind of one cost bucket there, the non-noticing costs. And then there's what's called the noticing cost, which is a little bit more straightforward. This is just simply the cost to actually physically mail to opt-out notices to every Rocky Mountain Power customer in participating communities' boundary. This is proposed to be borne independently by each community in direct relation to how many notices they have to send. So if community A has to send you know, two notices to 500 residents, they'll have to pay for those directly. So taking a little bit of a deeper dive into those non-noticing costs, I want to note that it's important that these costs are paid by participating communities so that they are not shifted to Rocky Mountain Power customers in communities who aren't participating. That was a really important part of the legislation and and why we see the need to pay these fees. So a bit of overview on what they are, the community expert is one or more technical and legal consultants who help with analysis and program detail negotiation with the utility. The Rocky Mountain Power application fee is the cost of the utility's time to go through these negotiations and to engage with the Public Service Commission. And then the Office of Consumer Services Division of Public Utilities is one or more individuals contracted through those departments to review the program details and make sure that they are fair and ethical. So essentially, the estimated total for this cost bucket for all participating communities comes to about $700,000. Using the proposed formula of 50% based on load, 50% based on population, we are able to derive an estimate for Cottonwood Heights at about $22,000. And we'll see that number come up again in a minute, but wanted to give a bit of background on that. Oh, sorry, it's not switching for me. There we go. And then the noticing cost again is just a more straightforward cost. And we have estimates that show we have about 14,000 Rocky Mountain Power customers in our city. So sending two opt-out notices in the mail to these customers puts us at about $11,000 for that noticing cost. So if we combine those two costs, we end up at $33,381.98. You may see it rounded up to $35,000 in certain budgetary documents. We felt like a round number could be helpful for budgetary purposes. It's also important to note that if needed or if desired, that non-noticing total, that $21,884.21 can be split and paid over two fiscal years. So if communities desire, they could pay half of that July 31st, 2021, and another half the next July alongside that noticing cost. So there is and that gets into the weeds a little bit, but there is the option for some payment flexibility if that's helpful for budget. I also want to note a little bit about customer choice. So paying this approximately $35,000 allows us to participate throughout the program all the way up until the program begins. So it's this one-time fee or split over two fiscal years if communities desire that gets us all the way to the end. At that point, if you know, the program launches, each Rocky Mountain Power customer then still has the choice of whether to participate or not. So they can participate in the new renewable program and be a part of this net 100% electricity program, or they can opt to stay on their standard offer electricity as they currently are. So paying that amount allows us to have the option of participating and allows us to give the option of participating to and allows us to give the option of participating to our community members. Also wanted to mention, there are a few informational meetings coming up that will give a little bit of more more of an update on the Governance Agreement and some program details. There are two different sessions being held on February 17th. So there is a morning session intended for elected officials, staff, and other representatives. It's going to be a virtual meeting, and links were sent directly to mayors to coordinate internally. And then we also have a session that afternoon from 2:00 to 4:00. That's intended for community members, community partners, local nonprofits, anyone who is interested in learning more. That's also a virtual meeting, and I have posted the registration link on the Cottonwood Heights Sustainability webpage for any individuals desiring to attend that meeting. So at this point, I would love to break and just ask if there are any questions on specifically on the Community Renewable Energy Program.
Oh, I guess you're good to go. That's great.
Pretty excited about it.
So far, so good. That sounds wonderful. For slides, let's find out what they are.
Councilmember Bracken, can I just mention one thing? So when we, when we talk in our council retreat, we want to get direction as to far as far as moving forward with the budget process. We're planning on including that amount, those amounts in our budget. But we'll have that conversation to make sure that that's the council direction, just to let you know.
Thank you.
If there are additional questions that come up, feel free to direct those to Tim, and and I can address those through him. Councilmember Bracken, would you be all right with me moving forward to the next one?
Please, please do.
Okay, wonderful. So the next sustainability update I want to share with you is about City Hall Solar, specific to Cottonwood Heights. So as directed by the council, we have received some updated quotes, multiple updated quotes for a solar array on City Hall here at Cottonwood Heights. These quotes estimate costs between about $266,000 up to about $530,000. This is decreased from the previous quotes we received in 2019, which were a bit higher at $469,000 to $610,000. The range I have here, the 266 to 530, represents kind of a low-end bid to a high-end bid, and it also represents varying offset percentages. So obviously, depending on the number of solar panels installed, you're going to offset a different percentage of your electricity usage. These quotes represent an offset of roughly 50 to 64%. Experts have informed me that based on the design of our roof, 100% offset isn't possible, but we can still look at kind of different options to still mitigate some of that that usage. In terms of cost savings, these quotes also represent a possible savings of between $19,000 to $26,000 of annual savings on electricity bills. And we can expect a return on investment between four to 10 years. That obviously is a broad range, and the exact projection will depend on the bid that is selected if we move forward, and also any financial incentives that are used, which I'll touch on next. I also wanted to note that, oh, go ahead.
I just, just for anyone who's listening or other people's historical perspective, when we designed the building, we did want to make it solar-ready. But one of the reasons that we did not go forward with it at the time is our payback was computed to be about 49 years. And so seeing a four- to 10-year payback on this type of investment after only just four years or so occupancy is a dramatic and wonderful improvement.
Yeah, thank you for that context. We are seeing some really hopeful projections with renewable energy, solar being one of them. The project can also be broken into multiple phases if that's desired, but it's important to note that we would probably expect to add about 20% to our total cost just due to recurring installation fees that you incur with multiple installs. So that could be something we want to look into, or maybe something that's not a good fit. So most of the financial incentives are in the form of an income tax credit, which as a city, we are not eligible for. The kind of one option that might be a great fit for for our project is the Blue Sky Community Project Program. This is a program that's funded by Rocky Mountain Power, and it provides assistance for a variety of renewable energy projects, solar included. Until very recently, applications to Utah were actually closed, and they were open only to Idaho and Wyoming. The Utah applications have just reopened. There is total $800,000 of funding available for Utah projects. On average, past projects have been awarded around $150,000. So applicants need to be prepared to cover the remaining balance of the bid. If staff, if council directs that we move forward with a solar project, staff is prepared to move forward with a funding application. And I do feel strongly that we we are a good candidate for receiving that funding. Does anyone have questions or thoughts on the City Hall solar concept?
Hi, Councilmember Michael has a question. Thank you, Samantha. That was well done. Can you remind me the the quotes that you received for were for installation in 2021 or 2022? Or what year?
Yeah, let me go, let me go back just to have the page up. Those are for 2021. I believe the quotes we have generally expire about six weeks out. Most bids that I've looked at kind of have that in there to protect against any changes. But assuming we were to move forward and assuming there was availability with the solar company and the financial incentives, a 2021 installation would be feasible.
Did you, you know, I I don't know if you asked the question, but you know, there's there's been a tariff on solar panels, and I just wondered if you had asked them what a 2020 date installation would be, if you'd see much of a difference, or or if you wouldn't.
Sure. Yeah, I did do research on those tariffs, both with solar companies and also with kind of community partners and energy nonprofits. And I was reassured that that wouldn't likely be a relevant component of our bid. Definitely something I can continue to look into, but I haven't seen any red flags on that so far.
And then can you maybe speak to the the assumptions that you used in the return on investment? Are you, what, what, what did you use for the cost of energy escalation? Are you just assuming it's flat, very little, you know, no change? Because I'm sure you know Rocky Mountain Power, I think, had a slight decrease in our rates this year. So can you just talk about what you used for that?
Yeah, those figures actually came in the bids themselves. So I don't have that information as part of this presentation, but I'd be happy to look at the bids and provide that information and look at at what figures the solar companies use. Again, that range is pretty broad, and it does represent the possibility of a quicker return if we ultimately pay less due to financial incentive, or maybe a bit of a longer return if if we don't. But I can look into that more.
Yeah, I I think that's, I think that's a key to the timeframe. And I think it's an important, I think it's an important aspect that we'd want to look at. And then, and then on the Blue Sky Program, you're saying that they just opened it up again to to Utah, and you think we're a good candidate. Maybe you can expand on why you think that. I mean, I'm just wondering if other cities will be, you know, thinking the same, and it'll be super competitive, and maybe we'll.
Jumping on the same boat with us.
It's it's highly possible that it may be competitive, given that there could be kind of a bottleneck with applicants waiting to submit and that funding now being open. I think we are a strong candidate as we meet the the eligibility requirements for these projects. They have to be a community asset. So for instance, like a residential install wouldn't qualify. So I do think that we we have a great chance at submitting an application. But there, there may be a bit of a time component there. And if we do want to move forward, I would be interested in getting an application in as soon as possible to hopefully beat any rush on those. They did just reopen, but it's possible that other applicants are already moving.
Samantha, what was the longevity of this type of solar? Did they give you that, work that into the equation?
They did. Yeah, it does vary from bid to bid as each bid utilizes a different panel manufacturer. And I can also pull more specific information on that to present that. The one I have on the top of my head that I looked at most recently was around 25 years. And I know that's also different for the panels versus the inverters. So I can make a note of that and provide more detailed information if that's helpful.
Thank you. I just, I have one question or request possibly for Councilmember Michael. This is obviously someplace where she's very well-versed. Would you have time maybe this week if Samantha gets you some of those documents to review them before our budget retreat next week?
I I can, I've got a whole host of other questions that I can pose to Samantha, and she can do some research, and I think we'll get to a good answer. So yes, I'm happy to.
I mean, that that would be great. You know, obviously, when we have somebody who really doesn't know those details, that would be really helpful. I think we could use certainly use some guidance come the next week, because we're not going to get it all answered here tonight. But these look very promising. I mean, it's great, but.
Yeah, I would definitely welcome any input from Councilmember Michael. These are just very preliminary figures meant to give kind of just a short bite into the changes we have seen since 2019. But I would love to get more information to help you make your decision.
Okay, you've got a few more slides, it looks like.
I do, yes, not too many. But just wanted to also touch on our inter-local sustainability action plan. This is an effort between our tri-city region, so Holiday, Mill Creek, and Cottonwood Heights. After we signed an inter-local agreement to collaborate on sustainability efforts, staff felt like it would be helpful to kind of come up with a master plan that would direct sustainability efforts and keep a cohesive vision. So we have met with staff from each city, as well as some very helpful community partners and nonprofits, to come up with a draft of this plan. The plan divides sustainability priorities that we received from each city's staff into five sections, waste management, energy, transportation, landscaping, and development. And it aims to balance specific goals with ample flexibility, recognizing that each community is at a bit of a different spot. So it's really meant to be a pretty high level and just as a tool for future decisions as those come. So we have received staff feedback on several iterations of this plan, and that will be incorporated along with any feedback from elected officials. A copy of this current draft was included in your council packet. So if you do have any feedback and are willing to send that through Tim, I will welcome those those comments and incorporate them into the next draft. Did anybody have questions on that project?
Sam, I I read through your draft, and I I loved it. But I would like the language to be stronger. Maybe instead of encourage, maybe we hold a standard as much as we can to make.
Sure, that is, that's an excellent point and something that is challenging to balance as each city has different feelings about the, you know, specificity of the language. My staff recommendation there would be that we keep it pretty high level in that plan. And then as each city sees fit, maybe adopting customized standards and interpreting those recommendations to best fit their needs. But that that has been a major consideration, and it actually initially was much more specific. And then feedback from staff kind of dialed that back a bit.
Okay, I I've questioned, the first one was on waste. All three of the communities use Wasatch Front Waste and Recycling for their, a lot of that. Did you go through someone out there and have their staff look at that as well?
Yeah, we have had a great working relationship with Ethan Morris, who is their sustainability manager at Wasatch Front Waste and Recycling, and he's been hugely integral to the process.
So this would not be a surprise to them.
I don't believe so, but we'll continue to to partner with them to make sure that they feel in the loop.
That's great. Thanks.
Well, unless there are any other comments, I will wrap up. And just if you do have additional thoughts, feel free to send them to Tim, and I will be ready and excited to continue to work on them.
No, thank you very, very much. I appreciate that. A lot of really good information, a lot more optimistic. There have been some significant changes in the industries and and things in general over the last couple of years. So, you know, I I think it's very positive all around.
We need a little bit of positivity. So thank you for having me tonight.
And I, and I will, and I'll give Councilmember Michael a thanks in advance for looking through some of those details. And maybe as as we move forward or decide what to do, which path that might look best. So, all right, our next item is a historic committee certified local government grant. Mr. Tingey, if you would enlighten us.
Yeah, I talked a little bit about this already, but we are requesting tonight in the business meeting approval from the council to submit a grant application to go through the certified local government grant process that's administered by the State of Utah Division of History. And it's for consultant services to do an evaluation of homes in our community. We've identified the locations in the grant application that's in the packet, includes areas along Danish Road, Esport Union, South Magic Fields Drive, and then other locations. I won't go through all of those. Anyway, it's to to evaluate, to determine if they're eligible to be placed on the National Historic Register. And then homeowners can apply for that in doing so, once the survey is done. So it, the grant is for $10,000. It includes a $10,000 match from the city. We have that budgeted. This is the process that we've gone through multiple times in the city. Gail Conger, who's on his historic committee, has done a great job, as I mentioned earlier, in preparing the grant and administering or working through the administration of this program. So we're going to be recommending approval tonight in the business meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is this a continuation? We've done another survey like this prior. Maybe it was a different thing. Is this a continuation of something that we had been doing before with, and this is the next step? Or is this, is that not, is this a, not the similar?
Yeah.
Survey?
Yeah, no, it's a similar survey. We've done this multiple times in in other years. And it's a continuation, meaning it's evaluating more homes, more properties that may be eligible for this historic standard. So yeah, this is not the first time we've done this multiple years.
I would just throw in a plug for the historic committee. We're really fortunate to have such high caliber individuals participating in our historic committee. They're phenomenal.
We are, and they deserve the plug, even though we already know that they're always awesome. I mean, that's just, that that's always been, they they have always done an awesome job. All right, so this is on our current year's budget. This just allows us to get the grant formally applied for or received.
Apply, apply for the grant. Yeah, apply for the grant. That's all I have, unless there's other questions. We'll ask for your your decision here in a little while.
I don't have any questions. The next item then would be our budget schedule review. You sent that out. Tim, Mr. Jurius, if you would, this has got your name on it. So I guess you get to tell us how we've got this schedule looking.
All right, so I'm going to share my screen really quick. So this is the the schedule. It's just a kind of outlines to us all what what were you to expect as we go through the process to develop our budget, different meetings with, you know, compensation committee, budget committee, council retreat, and other things. So I'll just kind of start where we are. We started already with departments circulating to get feedback on different things that they see coming in this next year. We're going to informally end it on the 5th with for the first go-around. It doesn't mean that we can't change those requests as we go through, especially after the council retreat, if anything else comes up that we need to address, that we can add. Excuse me, I will have a review with with Tim the the results of that the day before the council retreat, just in case there's anything in there that we weren't expecting. On the 10th, we've got the council retreat there where you'll set a lot of budget priorities and expectations. I'll have the five-year plan ready then, and likely also have the city comparison plan ready at that point in time, or whether it's then or at a future council meeting that we review that. Then the city manager will meet with the individual department heads to go over the different things that have been requested, to see if things need to be adjusted or adapted, or if there needs to be any clarification on. to see if things need to be adjusted or adapted, or if there needs to be any clarification on the different things that have been requested, or if there needs to be new things requested based on feedback that he gets, or he meets with you individually and collectively. Then from here down, we kind of start a series of regular meetings. We have budget committee meetings. Typically, in the past, these meetings have happened roughly the hour prior to council meeting. And I think that's what we're kind of targeting this year, although they haven't been officially scheduled at this point in time. There are different dates in here where we'll see some preliminary budgets outlined, just so you can get an idea of what we're looking, what, excuse me, what impacts we're seeing, what trends we're seeing. We'll review compensation throughout this time, meeting with the HR director, myself, and the city manager, as well as the compensation committee. Again, you know, budget committee will meet various times. Some of the dates, when we get a little bit closer to into April, we will have around the end of April, the twenty-third, we will hit our, basically outline our proposed budget just in case, and that, so we're ready to go. There's a council budget work session to kind of review that budget and, and develop our, what will ultimately be our tentative budget. And then on the first meeting in May, we're required to adopt a tentative budget. And doesn't mean, or accept a tentative budget, doesn't mean that we're adopting a budget, but this budget then becomes a budget that is put on display for the public so that the public can comment on the different things that are in that budget at that time. Then we have the May eighteenth meeting where we'll have some comments from you, as well as the, I'm sure the public will comment during the comment section on anything that they would like. June first, tentatively, we're scheduled the public hearing for the budget adoption. Doesn't mean that we have to adopt the budget that night, but we, we can get the feedback from the public on what, what they're seeing and what they're hearing from us all. And then on June fifteenth, we need to adopt our budget because we need to adopt our budget by the twenty-first, twenty-second, can't remember now which day. Got too many dates floating in my head. And if no tax increase, we'll, we'll adopt that budget and set the tax rate at that time. And we're not anticipating a tax increase at this point in time. If we go into tax increases and things, that would extend out into August if, if need be. But again, we're not expecting that. And then, then down here, just a kind of a outline of what groups, who's in what group, just in case there's questions of who needs to be at which meetings and what have you. Any questions?
Well, I guess we'll, 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 we'll set up, that's similar to what we've done the last couple of years.
Yes.
And the assignments that you still have, Councilmember Michael, myself, on the budget committee, and council members Peterson and Bruce on the, oh, now I forgot, compensation, what is it, the compensation committee?
Yes.
Okay, I'm assuming that you or someone would be sending out meeting invites once we set what time we're going to actually have these, these many, these meetings.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, for, for clarity's sake, I would, the only, my, the only clarification I would make to anybody who may be watching is that the, the June fifteenth day, that would be if there's no property tax increase or change to the certified tax rate. The budget may or may not include other types of fee changes or increases or other types of things that would not be relevant to that, the June fifteenth of the August dates. But we will have that discussion, I guess, next week at our budget retreat in a little bit more detail, at least as far as possible paths. Are there any questions about this schedule or comments or concerns? Okay, well, if that's the case, then we'll assume that that is, that is good. I, looking at this, the, the next item on the work session agenda is the calendar items. For those who may be listening or any others, we have been, or we will be, we had a, an initial meeting with our lobbyists about their work during the current session of the Utah Legislature. Those are occurring each Thursday morning at nine o'clock. The last one was, was very useful. I don't remember who exactly asked for those. It was Councilmember Michael or Bruce. But thank you. It's been a while since we had those weekly updates. It was very helpful. We will continue to have those. Those are available and open to the public. The links are posted on the agendas that are going out. So if you're interested in hearing those discussions, just need to sign into the Zoom and, and, and watch it at nine o'clock on Thursday. Those will continue through the end of the work session. Looks like the last one is March fourth. Still, given the current state of affairs, we're not doing a lot of other things that need events and whatnot. So there's nothing else on the calendar. Are there any other questions? I don't believe, Mr. Tingey told me that there wasn't any need, that he was aware of for a closed session. I'm not aware, aware of any, so if there are, is not, if there are not any other comments, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene our work session at, or, excuse me, our business meeting at seven o'clock.
So moved.
Scott, did you get that?
I got, I got, I got a, a motion by Councilmember Bruce, but no second. Did you second that?
I'll second that. I just didn't hear you acknowledge Councilman Bruce. Sorry.
Well, I didn't want to talk over, so, all right, it's been moved a second. All those in favor?
All right.
All right. Okay, with that, we will adjourn this meeting and log back on for our business session at seven PM. Thank you.
Thanks.